To our family members, quick show of hands. How many people actually wrote down a New Year's resolution this year? You all can leave. No. Stay here.
I'm with you. I was like three pages long.
Suddenly, the entire commission's got their hand. I love it. So next week, just as the bad news that's very public, next week is when they all fail. Whether you've written them down or whether you have them yourself. So we're going to help you to maybe have a new resolution after the first one fails. That's part of why we're here tonight. Movement is a critical piece. Some of us physically have challenges moving. We get that, but movement is beneficial to all of us. We hear that all the time. This is redundant, and hopefully, we're going to be here year after year, myself and Amy, reminding you of that fact. Any kind of movement is beneficial. Walking, running, riding, you name it, swimming. We all do different things. We all do it at different levels. The one message is, keep doing that. The beautiful thing we have here in this city, in this state, is four seasons. It's supposed to be winter. Similar to last year, we're thinking, is it going to come? Because snow has been minimal. Has the city manager realized? Late January last year, it did come, and it will this year as well. Indian Trails Golf Course is our winter wonderland. Not today, but we're anticipating in a week or two. December 26th, you were able to play golf at Indian Trails Golf Course this year. Indian Trails had three or four days around Christmas time it was open, which was marvelous. Very unique opportunity to enjoy golf in December here. Now, we're going to flip that switch here shortly and enjoy winter activities. No better place, Indian Trails Golf Course. Tomorrow night, we start fireside yoga in the clubhouse at Indian Trails Golf Course. Those of you wanting to take yoga, we have room for a few more folks. So feel free, please sign up. Don't just show up. 6 o'clock tomorrow night at Indian Trails. So multi-use facility. Couple of other things we want to remind you of. Rosa Parks Circle. Yes, it doesn't always look or feel like winter, but three blocks to the south, a lot of people are skating. Tonight, broom ball is happening at Rosa Parks Circle. So tonight, as you leave, those of you that want to skate, free skating passes at the census table out front when you leave. If you don't want to use it, give it to somebody who can. So please enjoy Rosa Parks Circle, one of our highlights in the winter activities. Mental health, very critical to wellness. Mental health is helped, spurred on by physical movement. Amy's going to demonstrate some physical movements, create some excitement in a couple of minutes. We want you all to take part of that, and Amy will lead you in that. The city has hired a new wellness coordinator. So this is wonderful that we're talking movement. We're going to have a huge focus from the HR department on wellness because of Jessica Welch. You will see her. Many of you have met her. Her energy level is out of this world. She will inspire you to move. Talking to Jessica enables you or pushes you to get active. I guarantee, if you haven't met Jessica, please do so. You are going to see a lot of offerings for both employees and residents of Grand Rapids that focus on learning and playing. And I won't get too much out of the bag quite yet, what we're going to offer. Again, targeted to both groups, everybody really in West Michigan. The focus is to have fun when you're moving. So we'll kind of trick you a little bit. Hopefully, it'll benefit your heart and other parts of your body. Now, we're going to start or continue our second annual activity, Zumba-related. I'm going to have Amy introduce herself and tell you exactly what we'll be doing.
Hello. How's everybody doing tonight? Good? You guys ready to move a little bit?
Yes.
Just a little bit? Yeah, so as John, I know. I remember you from last year. You had a lot of energy. Yeah, you're great. So last year, I didn't get to pick the song. This year, I got to pick the song, which was really nice. And I liked the song that we did. You picked it last year, I think. Yeah, it was good. But so at least now, I get to pick an uplifting song, and it has a really nice message. We want to start the new year with a bang, and so I hope you guys enjoy it. Please know that you can move however you want to move. So follow me, or take it a little bit lower, or if you want to take it a little bit higher, you can do that too. So there's no rules. So just a little bit of dancing. You guys ready? Yeah?
Well, thank you all for joining us. What a fun way to start the year, and a nice reminder that physical health is so critical, and we all should be focused on our wellness and balance in life. So with that, we will call this meeting to order. So we start off our meetings with a moment of silence, and then we'll move to the Pledge of Allegiance. So if you'd join me in standing, as I catch my breath.
(inaudible)
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next, we will have a roll call.
Commissioner Usasi.
Present.
Commissioner Repart.
Here.
Commissioner Lanier.
Present.
Commissioner Moody.
Present.
Commissioner Jones.
Here.
Commissioner O'Connor.
Present.
Mayor Bliss.
Yes. All right, so next, we have our first opportunity for public comment. If this is your first time coming to a meeting, let me just walk you through the agenda real quickly, and I'll point out a couple expectations. So we do have a full agenda tonight with six scheduled public hearings. So if you are here for a scheduled public hearing, I'm going to ask you just to stay put until I open up that public hearing, and that's a little bit later on on the agenda. The first opportunity for public comment is public comment specifically on any items that we're voting on tonight. So our rules for public comment, we ask that you share your name. The city that you live in will give you up to three minutes to speak. There's a little timer right up here. And then there's a clipboard over here on this table, and we ask you to put your name. And the only reason we do that is to make sure that we have your name correct in our minutes. So if you're here tonight to speak on something we're voting on, now is an opportunity to come forward. Is anyone here to speak on something? For this first opportunity, we ask you to specifically say what item you're speaking to. Happy New Year, Mr. Miller.
Happy New Year.
I didn't see you dancing.
Pardon?
I didn't see you dancing.
Absolutely. I have that covered. It wasn't on your agenda.[651.66][651.66](Laughter) Numbers, I did ask him back, and there was a lot of, who funded this, actually? So the world's greatest generation had the world's greatest music and deal with it. If you're going to play any music, and let's respect our heroic World War II. Veterans have played such a great role in liberating places like Denmark and in Holland and the ghettos, concentration camps. Good evening. As an arm, Mayor Bliss has just told me totally, I'm totally a dithered here, but I wanted to say, good evening, fellow veterans and citizens of Grand Rapids. This is the House of the People, Watchdog Miller reporting. On 6-894-53, we can't live with this. You know, all this childish going on here. You appointed on 453 resolutions approving U.R.N. appointments to various boards and commissions. Absolutely no names given, no names given in the Saturday paper. This is totally irresponsible, and you're liable, for all of you, for all of the mischief this causes. Many citizens are unhappy with the kind of public service we get in general. Basically, with you liberals, it's about public payroll padding, and one payroll, your favorite payroll, actually approached me before the meeting. 94, on 689487, I have a correction on that. So it should be nine times, should be black letters, Mr. Clerk, and at the end, slaughter clock should also be capitalized in black letters all across. 81, $34 million. If your settlement with Ramos Goomath, your favorite pyromaniac, was $190,000, that's two years of sidewalk plowing, Mr. Washington, including through minority neighbors. 9B5, no doubt or details what is going on. 9C1, that's Third Ward, kind of used funds for cameras all over the locations of Commissioner Moody's vast holdings on both sides of the street. Jefferson, as you know, is a ward boundary, so can use Third Ward cameras to shine into the First Ward to see what's going on, okay? He has brought up the potential of the press, and there should be cameras there. McDonald's deal, which read about in the paper on Hall Street, it should be a direct feed in there, the police are going to go there. That was a marvelous World War II location for hearing music, New Orleans jazz and so forth. So Third Ward cameras, funding Commissioner Moody's property, also to downtown, in my favor reopening the bridge facility.
Mr. Miller, your time's up. Thank you. Thanks. Anyone else who wishes to be heard on items we're voting on? Hi, welcome.
Sorry, Mayor Bliss. I'm actually the interpreter, and I wasn't able to do the announcement at the beginning. So we do apologize.
Oh, I am so sorry.
Yeah, good evening. So we're pleased to provide Spanish interpretation services for all the attendants that if this include interpretations during the meeting, and to provide public comments. If you're interested, we do have a table right at the beginning. Son muy buenas noches. Estamos encantados de dar el servicio de traducción y de interpretación a todos los participantes que lo necesiten esta noche. Esto incluye la interpretación durante la reunión. Si hay alguien que ustedes necesiten, tenemos la mesa organizada al principio de la mesa. Thank you, Mayor Bliss.
Thank you. Thank you so much, and I apologize for that. I asked the clerk to add that to my agenda so that I don't forget it in the future. So thank you so much. All right, anyone else who wishes to be heard on items we're voting on? All right, I'm going to close that opportunity for public comment, and we're going to move to approval of the minutes. And these are from our meeting that took place on December 17th. Can I get a motion?
So move support.
All right, any questions or comments? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, it carries. We have no petitions and communications tonight, so that will take us to reports of city officers, and we have two items before us.
The first one is Comptroller's Report for the period of December 5, 2019 through December 25, 2019, the amount of $34,335,892.45. And this, oops, sorry.
Sorry, that's received and filed.
And the second one is Treasurer's Report for the period of November 30, 2019 through December 19, 2019.
And that is also received and filed. So next, that will take us to our consent agenda, and these are items that we talked about earlier today and voted on in one of our standing committee meetings. So with one voice vote tonight, we'll adopt those items. So can I get a motion for consent?
I move to approve with the removal of D1.
All right. Do I have support?
Support.
Okay. So approval of all items other than D1. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, it carries. All right, so D1, we'll move to items removed, so we can read item one.
It is a resolution adopting the city's legislative priority agenda for consideration by the 2019-2020 Michigan Legislature.
All right, can I get a motion? Support. All right, Commissioner O'Connor, who's on our legislative team, you want to tell us about this?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I'm just, as earlier today, we adopted a legislative priorities agenda, which is for the first time in my tenure serving on this commission. We have clearly identified some priorities that this commission has that coincide with our strategic planning initiatives and really allow us an opportunity to work with our partners in Lansing to try to drive home some change that will be positive for residents in Grand Rapids.
Great, thank you. All right, so we have a motion and support for that item. Any other comments? Commissioner Lanier?
Yes, Mayor, I pulled the item because there were some legislative priorities that I thought would be great for the public to hear. Our 9:30 a.m. meetings do not afford the type of crowds that we get at 7:00 p.m., and I think the city manager a few months ago talked about us utilizing, pulling items from the consent agenda so that we can have public discussions, and I thought that was a great idea and have put that into practice. So I just, you know, I think that's a good overview, Commissioner O'Connor, but if we can talk specifically about all of the items within the legislative priorities, I think it would be, you know, great for the public to hear those items in detail. So if you, I don't know if the list can be pulled up.
Yeah, that's a, that's a great point, Commissioner, and I appreciate that. And maybe in the future, we should identify those so that we can have staff here. Is Karen's here tonight? So Karen, do you have the information that you shared in Committee of the Whole this morning? Can you maybe walk through that again so that the public can see, and not just those in the audience, but anyone watching online? So I'll give a little background on this. So in the past, since I've been mayor, we have a legislative team, and we meet monthly as we look at priorities to both move forward proactively but also reactively at the state and the federal level. We have government affairs or lobbyists that we work with, both at the state and the federal level, and we work really closely with them, with our government affairs office, to address issues that come up. So this year, unlike years past, we put together a slate of priorities. These are kind of big picture items. Some of them are very broad that we're still currently working on. In fact, I had a really great meeting today with one of our senators, talking about a number of these items and what we can do to support her work in Lansing to move them forward. And then we highlight, so we broke it down into different sections. So kind of big picture items we're working on, some four specific priorities that are closely related to funding priorities, and then legislation that we have openly and publicly supported, that either bills have already been presented or drafted, or they are issues that have been going on for years that just haven't moved in Lansing. So with that, Karen Farick is our government affairs specialist here at the city, and so I'll have her give an overview, but this will be adopted as a resolution, so all the items in here will clearly be shared with all of our legislators, that they are a priority to us, and that we're supportive of these initiatives. So Karen, you want to do a run-through of the priorities?
Would you like me to do the remarks that I gave earlier today? Is that what you're looking for, or just specifically go from the resolution?
Would that be sufficient? Yeah.
I think, yeah. Okay. So the resolution before you today advances the state legislative priority agenda, and the purpose is to clearly outline the position and interests of the city. It provides direction on the city's top four state legislative funding priorities and names those as follows. Prevention of childhood lead poisoning and exposure, including investment and increased funding options for lead paint remediation. Local options and tools to support increased housing. The river restoration and revitalization project. And district court funding reform and equitable investment in district court services. The resolution also details the principles to be used by the city manager, the legislative affairs manager, and the legislative committee in initiating, evaluating, and responding to legislative initiatives that impact the city and its residents. Finally, the resolution signifies the city's support of the following specific statewide initiatives that align with the legislative priority agenda as follows. Focused investment and funding for lead paint remediation. Driver's licenses for all. Expansion of the Elliot Larson Civil Rights Act. Continuation of the Good Jobs for Michigan program. Bail reform. Restoring the state historic preservation tax credit program. And district court funding reform. The legislative committee developed a draft state legislative priority agenda, which was reviewed and discussed at the August 2019 meeting of the committee, and then again in December, where they made final revisions and unanimously agreed to advance a resolution to this full body with a recommendation for adoption. The state legislative priority agenda is aligned with the city's strategic plan and reflects the city's values and strategic priorities. This agenda will promote the city's vision to strive to be nationally recognized as equitable, welcoming, innovative, and collaborative city with a robust economy, safe and healthy community, and the opportunity for a high quality of life for all. I look forward to working with our state advocacy firm to initiate, advance, evaluate, and respond to legislation and initiatives that impact the city and its residents, and we will work with all three branches of government and stakeholders to advance the city's priorities. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
And then, city manager, if you want to talk about, I know that this morning, when we had the conversation, they're quite vague, and we had conversation about this is kind of the starting point, and that the legislative committee, as well as staff, will be kind of looking at adding more bullets behind that, and I think it's important for the public to hear that too, because this isn't the end of that list, and that there may be other items that will be added to that list in the future.
Thank you, Commissioner. My comments this morning was, was around the specificity. This is, gives the staff, legislative affairs staff, broad operational guidelines, so we know what legislation advocate, advocate for, what types of legislative initiatives we want to oppose. But in the interim, some of the specific details around items will be either already mentioned in the strategic plan, or they will come up as needed by the legislative team as we develop items specifically. One example I gave this morning was around having a local land bank. Detroit is the only city in the state that has municipal authority to have a local land bank, and we may want to pursue positive legislation that it gives us that local authority. And so that is something that we would develop specifically, but we will not be able to develop specificity around everything that's on the list, but we will prioritize those in the top four prioritizations are the ones that we will be working on.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. Okay, thank you. So with that, I'll call a question. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, it carries. All right, thank you, commissioners, and thank you to our team, as well as the firms that we work with, for all of their help in drafting this. So I should just say one other thing. I had a meeting today with our senator, but we will be meeting with all of our legislators from West Michigan again to go through this. I think it's also important to note that some of our legislators are already working on some of these issues, and so we will be waiting to see what is in their proposal, and we'll be working with them on that. So next, that will take us, we don't have any ordinances before us tonight, commissioners, and we don't have any resolutions, but we do have a number of public hearings. There's two public hearings that are around the same property, so when we get to that, I'm going to ask for your support in hearing those together, but we'll start with the very first one, and that is a public hearing to consider an application for a 10-year obsolete property rehabilitation exemption certificate pursuant to PA 146 of 2004, 642 Bridge LLC at 642 Bridge Street Northwest. So this public hearing has been made pursuant to state law. So what we'll do tonight is we'll start with Mr. Kluscher giving us a little bit of information. We'll see if someone from the, from the LLC is here who wants to speak to it. I'll open it up for my colleagues to ask any questions, and then if you're here tonight to be heard on this, I'll open up the floor for you. So, Mr. Kluscher, want to give us a summary of this?
I do. Good evening, Mayor and Commissioner. So this is a public hearing to consider a 10-year obsolete property rehabilitation exemption certificate. This property is located at 642 Bridge Street. There was an obsolete property rehabilitation district established at this property in 2016 for a project which did not transpire, and so we do not have to ask you to consider the establishment of that district as it already exists. So this is a property that's located in the Stockbridge Business District. A reminder that the obsolete property tax exemption program provides a reduction in new taxes that are generated as a result of the investment. It is performance-based, meaning that the benefit is only received if a project investment is made. So this property in particular is a 3,400 square foot, single-story building. It was determined to be functionally obsolete in 2016. The building was constructed in 1900 and used most recently as a church, although it has been vacant for about 10 years. This project involves about a quarter million dollars investment by the applicant, and then there's an additional half a million dollar investment anticipated by the tenant, which is expected to be Cedar Springs Brewing Company, although they do need to apply for special land use for alcohol sales and a parking waiver. The results of the project would be seven and a half new full-time equivalent jobs with average wages of $19.50 an hour. This project was supported by the West Grand Neighborhood Organization and the West Side Corridor Improvement Authority. The John Ball area neighbors did receive a report on the project. They did identify alcohol sales as a concern of theirs. The Economic Development Project Team did review this project on December 3rd last year. Ryan Weber is here, representing 642 Bridge LLC, and I'll ask him to come up and provide a little bit more detail about his plans and the time for his project, and then we'll be happy to answer any questions.
Great, thank you. Welcome, Mr. Weber.
Hey, thank you so much, and thank you guys for all entertaining this incentive. So he pretty much covered just about everything we're going over, but like he said, the building was constructed in 1919, originally purposed as a church, or as a theater. It's called the Roosevelt Theater. Said for like 50 years, purpose is that. Sat vacant for a period of time, and then was repurposed into a place of worship. It sits directly across from Harmony Hall, if there's any question as where that's at. So just, just south, kitty corner of the Bridge Street Market. So I am here as the developer. I'll also speak a little bit about the tenant, or the proposed tenant, what he wants to do with it. So from my standpoint, our work really is structural-based. The building hasn't had any real work done on it in maybe 50 years or so, so bringing it back up to code is elaborate. It needs a new roof. A lot of structural components to hold that new roof up are needed, none of which are cheap, which is why we are seeking this Oprah abatement to help relieve some of that, that financial burden from doing those and making this project possible. Cedar Springs Brewing, this is going to be their second location. Some people may be familiar with them. Very popular in Cedar Springs, but also amongst people in Grand Rapids and West Michigan. This new location will be slightly different than the first. Not going to have a full kitchen. They're not going to serve a ton of prepared food, so it'll be just appetizers, and really can be marketed more as a traditional German beer hall. He is extremely passionate about what he does as a, as a business owner, huge advocate of his community in Cedar Springs. Everything points, points us to believe that he'll do the same here on the west side of Grand Rapids. And in addition, obviously, you know, where we're located is kind of a bookend to that developed region of Bridge Street. Really, really hoping and optimistic about our project being a catalyst for more development west of stocking there. So that's, that's what we're looking at.
Thank you so much.
Thanks.
Commissioners, any questions? I, John, I just have one question. And can you? Can you remind me with Oprahs, when they are approved, is there a time limit on when the construction is supposed to start, or how long individuals have to complete the project? And does the clock start ticking for the Oprah when we approve it, or when the development begins?
Yeah, a couple of questions there. So, the answer to your first question is that there is a two-year timeframe in which the investment should be complete.
Okay.
The answer to your second question is that the timeline does start upon approval. So, this incentive, this particular project, for instance, we would bring back to you for approval at your next meeting. It would be effective on December 31 of this year, meaning their tax benefit would begin next year, and they would receive 10 years of tax benefit.
If the development is complete within two years?
Correct.
Is that right?
Correct.
Okay. I'm just making note that an Oprah was approved in the past, just three years ago.
Yeah, and so for this property, that application was never submitted to the state, so there is no exemption certificate at this property. If it had been...
Question.
If it had been, we would have had to bring a request to you to revoke that exemption certificate, but because it was never submitted to the state, the exemption certificate was never issued by the state treasurer.
Okay, thank you. You read my mind. All right, appreciate that. All right, so if you are here tonight to be heard on this request, your opportunity to come forward is now, so you can come up, come to the podium, share your name, the city that you live in, and again, this needs to be very specific to this item. If you're not speaking to this item, I'm going to ask you to sit down and hold off until public comment at the end, because we have four others. Mr. Miller, are you coming forward, or no? And it has to be related to this Oprah, Mr. Miller. Just reminding you of the rules.
Well, my dad grew up in that neighborhood, and Stocking Street Carolina ran right there before that, the Stocking Horse Royal Line, which was put in in 1887. What's destroying that neighborhood is because of, I'm glad you finally mentioned what location it actually is, Roosevelt Theater. My aunts probably all went there, and my dad made, is that specific enough? And how it's used? And I mean, there's just general widespread vast, if not discussed, disdain for all the subsidies that the brewery industry gets. Catholic schools in that street town neighborhood, St. James across the street, St. Michael Archangel, Ukrainian, and so forth, St. Mary's, St. James, and the Basilica, which you all see from there. They don't get any subsidies, even though they produce our greatest citizens. The reason why that block half has gone down both sides of the street is because of the beep aside from your rapid buses, which you approve, you probably approve more rubber stamp appointees to the rapid board, ITP, under 89453.
This is related to the request for obsolete property rehabilitation?
And that's why they're obsolete, ma'am. This is disguised by, on the corner of, for example, Lexington and Bridge, they put it in a real estate company because they can't get rid of that company. The rapid is destroying it with the right term, the beep aside the right terms, which I submitted to you quite a few times, and to everyone except the commissioner you say, and I'd like to be helpful. How do we pronounce, I don't want to get in trouble here. How do we pronounce your last name, if you could share that with us? I can pronounce the first name, but that would be rude. So, we're on 642. My dad, particularly his sisters, I'm sure, went to Roosevelt Theater many times. We do not need a brewery. It's a general consensus. If you put this up for reference, it would go down at 85%. Why should these citizens have their taxes go up, and still only, very ginger, only 100 miles of sidewalk piling out of an 142 miles of sidewalks in this town? So, thank you very much, and I go by that location. I was puzzled about the church, how it developed. I didn't realize it was Roosevelt. Thank you very much. 31 seconds.
All right, anyone else who wishes to be heard about this obsolete property rehabilitation
Hi, my name is Martha Cooper. I come very often to speak about housing issues. We were entertained earlier with the city manager. He was talking about the budget. So, for quite a long time, I've been coming up here, and I've been watching things called brownfield developments and also obsolete property. So basically, you're going to waive some taxes for them, so that they can put in their for-profit business. And I've been watching and seeing a whole lot of money going into businesses that are doing well enough to relocate. So, I mean, we had a $400 tax abatement go to Sacia. Who doesn't need it? So I keep thinking, when we're talking about money, I'm talking about priorities. So, I don't think that our priority, while we have housing as a crisis in this city, and I've watched, now they're talking about doing something for the missing middle when we have no middle class anymore, when it comes to housing, but we still don't have the most vulnerable covered, and yet you're going to give our taxpayer money. It doesn't matter to me if you're giving them the cash upfront, or if that for-profit business is making their profit, and yet we're the ones that are going to give them a break in taxes. So that means there's not going to be any money coming in from that for-profit business to deal with the crises of the rest of the people in this community, and we pay taxes, okay? And that's really our money you're giving them. That's city money. So, I'm asking you to look at your priorities and to stop giving funds. I mean, Amazon was going to go into New York City, and they were going to expect a whole lot of money from New York City, and they've worked really hard, the community, to say, no, we don't want that anymore. Well, they didn't get their millions, and Amazon moved in anyway. I want to know if they really want another brewery on the west side, okay, that they can pay their own taxes.
All right, thank you. Anyone else wishes to be heard? Okay, I'm going to close that public comment period, and that will be referred to committee of the whole. All right, next that will take us to our second public hearing tonight. Commissioners, if you are supportive, I'd like to take two and three together. It's the same project. All right, so I'll read both of these, and then open that up, and we'll follow the same process. So we'll have Mr. Cluster go first, and then a representative from the organization. I believe Mr. Barton is here. So this is a public hearing to consider the establishment of an obsolete property rehabilitation district pursuant to PA 146 of 2000 for 1600 Monroe LLC at 1351 Leonard Street Northwest, as well as a public hearing to consider an application for a ten-year obsolete property rehabilitation exemption certificate pursuant to PA 146 of 2000 for 1600 Monroe LLC at 1351 Leonard Street Northwest. So again, this public hearing has been made pursuant to state law, and we'll start off with Mr. Cluster giving us some background, then we'll have Mr. Barton come up, and then we'll open the floor up for comment.
Thank you. Thank you. So, with these two public hearings for the same project located at 1351 Leonard Northwest, I'm sure Mr. Barton will be able to explain why the address doesn't match the LLC name in this particular instance. This property is the former West Leonard Elementary School. It's a 17,000 square foot building, determined by the city assessor to be functionally obsolete. It was built in 1928, used as a public school until approximately 2012. The project is a $2.6 million renovation for an event facility, including a small addition to the existing building, 23 and a half full-time equivalent jobs with average wages of $17.51 per hour. This project as a event facility required special land use approval from the planning commission, and that was obtained on December 13, 2018. The project has been supported by the West Leonard Business Association, the West Grand Neighborhood Organization, and the Economic Development Project Team on December 3rd. I'll point out that in all of these projects, you have four projects before you tonight, and that the city obviously has multiple sources of revenue, including income taxes, and that we do, as staff, evaluate all of these projects, and you'll notice that they all result in a positive return on investment to the city, and so while we do give up some of the future property taxes for a short period of time, that we do actually, all these projects result in net positive revenue to the city through income taxes from new employment. So with that, I will invite Chad Barton, representing 1600 Monroe LLC, up.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, mayor. Thank you, commissioners. Thank you, Jono, for the presentation. So, we're excited about this project. We're looking to reactivate a building that has been shuttered for over seven years. It is a school that is about 17,000 square feet that was built in the early 1900s, and it is an awesome building. It's a great attribute for the west side, and we're looking forward to reactivating that. Part of the need for our Oprah is that every wall in this building is structural, and to open it up for a venue, we need to not just have little classrooms, we need wide-open space. And so the cost to do that is what is a deterrent in today's environment, and the jobs that we're creating are, as Jono explained, going to circumvent and allow the Oprah to happen if we can move forward with that. We've gone through the special use permit process. We've gone through the rezoning process on this property, so we've had a little bit of a long haul, but we're excited about extending the Leonard corridor, and happy to answer any questions that you might have.
All right, commissioners, questions? Nope. Okay, all right, thank you. So if you are here tonight to be heard on this project, you are welcome to come forward. All right, seeing none, I'm going to close that public hearing, and that will be referred to committee of the whole. All right, next that will take us to a public hearing to consider a brownfield plan amendment for the Vandenberg Center redevelopment project located at 111 Lyon Street Northwest and 200 Monroe Avenue Northwest. So again, notice of this public hearing has been made pursuant to state law. We'll start with Mr. Cluster, and then I see Mr. Cummings in the room. I saw him dancing earlier, so I'll ask him to come up and share some information about this, and then if you're here to be heard on this item, I'll have you come up. All right?
So, a public hearing on a brownfield plan amendment for CWD 111 Lyon LLC for the two properties, 111 Lyon and 200 Monroe. 200 Monroe is a facility, meaning that it's contaminated with various metals and PNA's in the soil and groundwater, and then 111 Lyon is a contiguous property, so both of those properties qualify for inclusion in the brownfield program. This development is proposed as a condominium development, so the property's been split with 200 Monroe being redeveloped by the RTV Corp. for consolidated offices, and then the ground floor retail and the 111 Lyon building are being redeveloped by the applicant. The first, it will happen over several phases, and I'll let Mr. Cummings talk about the phasing of this project. The total investment is estimated at over $116 million, with construction costs in excess of $80 million. That includes significant investment in streetscape, including sidewalks, stairs, snowmelt landscaping, and so forth. When it's all completed, this project could result in more than 350 new full-time jobs in the city of Grand Rapids. The public hearing is specifically on the brownfield plan amendment. So the brownfield plan amendment includes $5.7 million of brownfield eligible activities, and for this project, it's limited to demolition and lead and asbestos abatement are the only activities that are included, and the $5.7 million would be reimbursed to the developer with the new taxes generated by their investment. We estimate that would occur over 13 years. This project is also supported by the Downtown Development Authority, which is investing $950,000 in support of the project for public infrastructure and the elevator replacement. With that, I'll invite Mr. Sam Cummings, representing the developer, to come up and share the specifics of his project.
Great, thanks. Hello, welcome.
Thanks, city commissioners. Nice to see you. Thank you for your service. I am also a city taxpayer, a proud city taxpayer, city resident. This project, I've been doing this for almost 30 years, and this is our 44th project just inside the city limits, and it's one that we are particularly excited about because it is in the center of our city. And Vandenberg, it's interesting that 2019 is the 50th anniversary of the original redevelopment of Vandenberg Center, while the design of it did have, might be questioned today, as it did eradicate four city blocks of pretty interesting historic buildings in the late 60s. The process of Vandenberg Center and our, it was our urban renewal project, our Federal Highway Act project, and it also engaged philanthropy and private folks together at a time when most people were evacuating cities. And while the design may be questioned today, it still is a testament to the founding of really the culture of our city, which is this private and public partnership, which, you know, we have got great buildings and things like that, but at the core, it is that culture that really makes it work around here. So, Jono, thank you, and I also want to acknowledge the city staff and commissioners in not only this project, but in a lot of things that would not happen without that sort of, that mutual trust and advancement of these important things. So, this is really exciting for us. It is a heavy lift. It's a difficult project logistically and otherwise, but one we are looking forward to. It represents our phase two already. Our introduction to Vandenberg Center was, we call it polishing the turds. We like to recycle buildings is our primary mantra, and that began with our redevelopment of 250 Monroe into the regional headquarters of Bank of America with Rome on the ground floor, and our goal is, in the shadow of the convention center, in the core of our downtown, to reactivate and create co-tenancy and activity, et cetera. And this is phase two of that for us. There hopefully will be phase three, but the phase two, as Jono mentioned, is a somewhat complicated condominium project because of the property lines don't line up with the building infrastructure and how those things lay out relative to the best uses. So we spent a lot of time in design development. One of the things that we are very, very cognizant of is that when we build something in our city, it's not just on us. In other words, that what we construct is a reflection of our community. People don't come to Grand Rapids and say that Cummings did a good job or a bad job on a piece of architecture. It becomes a reflection of who we are as a community. So we pay a lot of attention to details and make sure that architecture is reflective of that, and we're particularly excited about this. So, this phase two is the redevelopment of the plinth on Vandenberg Center, which is that was the design du jour back in the 60s, which created a setback, which the 111 Lyon and 200 Monroe buildings sat on, but that is all building behind that big granite wall. So we are tearing down a lot of that. We are reusing some of it, and we're in creating activated storefronts, snowmelt, good outdoor public spaces, and reactivated city streetscape. I'm happy to say that we believe that with some of our retail experience in near neighborhoods, et cetera, that we feel very comfortable that we're going to be able to deliver something that we'll all be very proud of in the coming years. And it is a significant investment for us, but it's our hometown, and it's the center of our hometown, and we're particularly excited about it. We do hope that phase three will be, as you know, 111 Lyon has recently been evacuated. So we're going to, phase three, we hope, as we are able to revitalize the ground floor on Lyon Street and reactivate that, that we can polish that turd as well, and our goal with that building is to attract a new...
Mr. Miller, please don't interrupt, and don't yell from the back of the room.
A new corporate headquarters at 111 Lyon. Noted, sir. Polish that eyesore, and attract a new corporate headquarters to our city. So, that's our long-term goal. Again, we're grateful to the city for working with us, and I'll field any questions or be dismissed.
Yeah, thanks. And commissioners, just to point out, I believe that Mr. Cluster touched on this, but in addition to the demolition, there's significant lead and asbestos remediation that needs to be done on the site, and we all know that brownfield authority really looks closely at the environmental aspects of redevelopment of these brown facilities. Any questions, commissioners, for either Mr. Cummings or Mr. Cluster? All right, thank you. I'll open it up for public comment. So if you're here tonight to be heard on this request... So if you're here tonight to be heard on this request, now's an opportunity to come forward.
So on this particular request, I understand that he has, he had mentioned forty successful projects.
Not all successful.
So, I didn't remember, sir. So I understand that he's had some, forty projects. I would hope they'd be all successful. At any rate, so apparently, he has the money to do this investment, right down to the lead, okay? I have a hard time listening to the lead thing when we're not giving any of this money to the people that are with kids, okay? So it's really difficult for me to hear that. What I really wanted to say was, because while I'm listening to this, I keep, and I've been here for a long time, hearing all these buildings going up with apartments that are not affordable, even what you call affordable is at thirty-two thousand, which isn't affordable. So what I heard earlier today from our city manager, when I was at Linkup, was that all of these buildings, that we now have all of these ground floor retail spaces, those retail spaces are not getting full, okay? Also heard, and then I wonder, how much is the city going to invest in getting businesses to move into these retail spaces which we have built? And then we've given the developers these Brownfield Development Credits or tax abatements. And I'm like, well, no wonder we don't have any money for affordable housing. And then I understand, just recently, we've got a few businesses. I'm not going to pick over whether they deserve it or they don't, but is it really the city's job to subsidize a business? We want businesses in there, yes, but are we really going to turn around all the time and give money to rocks in the river? I heard you didn't want, there wasn't going to be any investment of the city in that, and now there is. So when I hear this and I hear about these other places with ground floor retail aren't filling up, we're going to have some more ground retail. Just saying.
All right. Anyone else who wishes to be heard?
Well, watch, Doug Miller. We discussed the rules about, this was the site of the Key Theater. Mr. Cummings and his colleagues, worrying of the boss and so on, have lied, and they have a big plaque in front of 111 that says, "Jim Crow ended here with the desegregation of the Key Theater, allowing African-Americans to come downstairs." That's a lie. They're not city buses. How many times have I told you? City buses would not be tolerated at City Hall nor 111 Lion. We've never seen his crowd come up here and say, "Why don't we have bus service for minority neighborhoods, from the west-side neighborhoods?" That's what we need to go, his businesses would not be in so much trouble. City law should be pursuing him. They've got sixty percent of the office market, office space downtown.
Mr. Miller, this is specific about the Brownfield. Do you have an opinion about the request for a Brownfield?
Yeah. It's unjustified, okay? You never, you let him roll on and on. That's discriminatory. He's a donor, okay? If the scary Brownfield's out there less than one block away from City Hall, then that should have been addressed first, okay? With your vast environmental services. Why wasn't the public ever alerted, including me? I have status. I go into that building, okay, a couple of times a month. What business I have there is none of your business, but I do go in there. Lead, asbestos, all sorts of scary, five million dollars for the scary contaminants there at 111 Lion. And the, someone talking specifically, why, has this been allowed? Why aren't there any signs that they're warning people away from it? Also, he's blocked off the sidewalk there at that very project. I have no objection to condos going there, but we should not be subsidizing it, okay? Tear down, Madam Attorney, tear down that false plaque put up by our city bar association and the state bar association, saying that Jim Crow ended there. Certainly hasn't. You're black routes, one, two, three, five, fourteen, don't get me started on Catholic routes. You black guys, you do have liability.
Mr. Miller, I understand you're opposed to this Brownfield, so thank you.
No, no, I still have time. You never interrupted him at all. He's one of your favorite donors, okay? This is discriminatory, ma'am.
Mr. Miller, this has nothing to do with bus routes.
So, tear down, kind of look at that sign. He lied about the sign, and he leaves up there at 111 Lion Street. And it's a public nuisance. There's no way whatsoever we should be subsidizing his latest project. Also, he cut off the public restroom. You wander all around down there, less than a block away from here, and you can't find public restrooms. He blocked it off. I never saw that approval once when he came for the first Brownfield project next door. And so they cut it up, there's a huge wall they pulled up.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Time's up. Thanks.
But you gave him unlimited time, ma'am.
All right. I'm going to close that public comment period, and that will be referred back to Committee of the Hall. All right. Next, that will take us to our fifth public comment, or public hearing tonight, and it's a public hearing to consider a Brownfield Plan Amendment for the Leonard Development Partners LLC redevelopment project, which is located at 415, 419, and 421 Leonard Street Northwest. So again, we'll have Mr. Kloster talk about this, and then we'll have Mr. Brand come up and share any additional details.
Very good. So the final public hearing tonight is, again, on a Brownfield Plan Amendment filed by Leonard Development Partners for three properties located on West Leonard, 415, 419, and 421 Leonard Street Northwest. The 415 and 419 Leonard properties are facilities, meaning that they're contaminated, and the 421 property is adjacent, and therefore all eligible to be included in the Brownfield program. The three existing buildings on these properties would be demolished as a part of this project to make way for a new twenty-three thousand square foot retail and office building. It would be a multi-tenant building with retail on the main floor and office above. Estimated project costs are just under five million dollars, with three and three-quarter million dollars in construction costs. As a result of this project, we would anticipate seventy new, new-to-the-city, full-time equivalent jobs with average wages of thirty-seven dollars an hour. I think important to point out that these are existing jobs that are located outside of the city, so I don't want to give the impression that there are seventy new job opportunities, but these are individuals working outside of the city currently that will become city taxpayers. So again, this public hearing is on the Brownfield Plan Amendment, which contains four hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars of eligible costs for environmental activities, demolition, lead and asbestos, site preparation, and infrastructure improvements, which we expect will be reimbursed to the developer from their new taxes generated by their investment over a fifteen-year period. This project was presented to and supported by the West Grand Neighborhood Organization, the West Leonard Business Association, the West Side Corridor Improvement Authority, and it was reviewed by the Economic Development Project Team on December third. That'll invite Mr. Brand to come up, spend a little time talking about the details.
Hello. Welcome.
Thank you. Thanks, Mayor. Thanks, Commissioners. Thanks, John O, and thanks, city staff. As always, great public-private partnership, and certainly appreciate all the staff's work on the project thus far. Very excited to be continuing investment on the west side. My family's been there for approximately fifty years doing business, and we hope this is just the next chapter in doing more business on the west side. The development is, the three buildings, as John O mentioned, we accumulated those over the last twelve to fifteen years, and it was somewhat speculative buying, with the hope that we could someday develop these properties. So that day is now here. So we're very excited to have some great tenants lined up and some great jobs to bring into the Grand Rapids city. And so really, the main purpose of the whole vision is to take the existing location of Brands on Leonard Street, continue investment there. My dad is certainly excited to continue doing business there for, I think, another fifty years if he can, may, continue doing that. And then the block west, which is these three buildings, we would want to continue to add, we have some new announcements that'll come out, but we have some great vision for that block. And then further west, there's some other opportunities that we'd like to, this would just be a catalyst for that greater vision. So a lot of things great happening on the west side. I'm sure Commissioner Repart and O'Connor would say, you know, the west side's can be the best side, and so we're looking to continue that. Can be. I'd say can be. So happy to field any questions or thanks for your consideration.
Thanks. Commissioners, any questions or comments? All right. Thank you, Mr. Brand. If you're here tonight to be heard on this item, please come forward.
If the Brands have been there for that long, are they one of the stakeholders? Because I keep hearing stakeholders. And I'll tell you who's a stakeholder, the people that have been under-invested over in the third, you know, over on the southeast side, and the people that are getting pushed out of our city, they have a stake too. So I'm looking and I'm seeing that we're using this word stakeholders, and I just feel like that's just showing where your priorities actually are. I get that you want the revenue from the income, okay? But I'm also looking at it like, hey, if people want to make money, this is a great town to do it in. They can invest. They have the money to invest. You're the folks that are saying you don't have money for this or that part of the budget, and yet I see you constantly giving away public money. Well, then you say you don't have any for this priority. This is a world, I want you to think about the word stakeholders, because I see a real distinct difference in this room. I sat on the wrong side. Apparently, all the stakeholders sit over there, the ones that have money, that develop things, and then Bank of America comes in, but that guy needs a tax abatement. Brands need some Brownfield Development Credits. No, they don't. They have a choice. They can develop here or not.
All right. Others wish to be heard?
Jim Howe, City of Grand Rapids. My question for this one is, the write-up says existing jobs retained full-time is zero, but from my understanding, it's the location is where the West Grand Neighborhood Association organization functions out of. It's one of the buildings that's being knocked down. Is that not correct?
They've moved.
They moved.
They moved.
That's correct.
Because of the lead and asbestos?
Not that I'm aware of.
Oh, okay. We're good then. I see what happens. We're good.
A good question. They did move locations, but they did provide support for this project. All right. Anyone else who wishes to be heard?
I watched Doug Miller back. In terms of claiming that WGNO supported it, there should be an exact vote total of how many neighbors actually voted, what was the vote total, voting for Johnny Brand? Johnny Brand's business pretty, once in a while, I'm schedule-trapped there, like you had your marijuana, you had your marijuana hearings there, so I was trapped in there and eating that food. Food's lousy. The music is painful. They don't recognize their market. They blast the most painful music, and why should we be subsidizing this? So that's the main problem with Johnny Brand's. Johnny Brand can do whatever he wants. I recall his brother, who's now in the State House, went out there to...
Let's talk about this project.
He's a stakeholder. His brother owns part of that office building, okay?
So, Mr. Miller, are you supportive or opposed?
So anyway, he called two beefy Wyoming cops on me because I was trying to stop the forty-million-dollar division boondoggle. He wouldn't allow, he wouldn't allow me to testify on it. So there are a bunch of fascists, and they play crude music. Why should we subsidize?
It's violation of our meeting procedures.
Mr. Miller, no more name-calling. You have, no more, no more. You're done. All right. Anyone else who wishes to be heard? Okay. We're going to close that public comment period, and that will move to Committee of the Hall. All right. Next, that will take us to our last public hearing tonight. Yeah? Got it. And this is a public hearing on the amendment to our Parks and Recreation Strategic Plan. So what we'll do tonight is we'll open this up with our Parks Director. So this amendment would be to include the addition of the Grand River Corridor Implementation Plan and the River Trail Design Guidelines, which we refer to often as River for All. So we'll start tonight with our Parks Director, and then if you're here tonight to be heard on this item, I'll open it up for comment right after. Welcome.
Mayor, Commissioner, City Manager, thank you for moving with the Parks and Recreation Department earlier this evening. It provided a little bit of energy. I love it. This public hearing is for an amendment to the Parks Master Plan, which includes two items, the first of which is Grand River Corridor Implementation Plan and rolling that into the Parks and Recreation Master Plan. The second of which is individual park master plans that were completed over the last five years as a part of public outreach and neighborhood engagement with the 2013 Parks Millage. As you recall, the Parks Master Plan back in 2017 was shaped by a significant neighborhood voice across the city. All three wards represented a total of roughly fifty-three hundred individuals engaged as a part of that process. The River for All project components primarily included six, what we called, opportunity sites that were part of that planning process. Those included the Leonard to Anne Street Trail Connection, which is the last remaining trail segment in the city of Grand Rapids to be developed for full connection through the city of Grand Rapids to the White Pine Trail up through and north of Grand Rapids. The second site is the decommissioned water storage site along North Monroe, the Colebrook Decommissioned Water Pumping Station, which is currently under decommissioning, the Monroe North Park Site that was recently acquired over the last three years, Fish Ladder Park directly across the river on the west side. And then the sixth site is the Grand Rapids Public Museum Site to the south end of the River Corridor. The River for All planning process was also very robust in its public engagement. We met the people where they are, if you will, and engaged with citizens as a part of events that were occurring in and throughout downtown and across the city of, excuse me, city of Grand Rapids. And so with this information, we'd like to include these individual park master plans and these River for All Design Guidelines as a part of the Parks Master Plan. Any questions?
Commissioners, any questions? All right. Thank you. All right. So if you're here tonight to be heard on this item, you're welcome to come forward.
Mr. Howe, your flashlight's on in your phone.
So I voted for that millage. I think it's really great in our city to have public parks, especially since much of the housing that we're putting in actually has no land. So it's very good to have a city with some small parks and stuff. But also, when I did that, I really didn't know that any of that money for parks was going to go into this river restoration. At any rate, I don't expect to be right all the time, Ms. Bliss, when I come up, because I'm a city person. I don't know everything. I know what I'm concerned about. Those are the things I speak to. One of the things that's a flaw here is that we can speak, but we don't get educated. Nobody ever answers their questions, right? So that's a problem. At any rate, I just wanted to say that I can't abide seeing money going into the river when it wasn't supposed to be in the first place. I notice very often that Brownfield Developments or something will get done based on what they were planning, and then the plan changes. Well, we weren't planning on spending any money, and I still don't know about the Sixth Street Bridge and, you know, who's for this and who's against this. I just feel like this isn't quite right. And, you know, it's one thing to have a development, but it's another thing to have people pushed out. We have, we talked about, I asked once about, where's the city land? How much is it going for? I can't get answers to that, apparently. So we talked, and we said, there's not much city land. But we do have schools around, and they're not full. There's one up there on Leonard. It's very small, and there's a nice sledding hill. So I don't know where the city land is. I feel like if you really wanted to educate people, there's a way to do that than to sit and look at me like I'm not educated enough. I'm educated enough to speak about what you're doing with our money, the city's money. I live in the city, okay? I'm educated enough to speak to it, saying that rich people do not need this money to I'm educated enough to speak to it, saying that rich people do not need this money to develop here and make profits. I also know that I'd really much rather see Cherry Park and neighborhood parks get money than this turned into a river restoration money project. It's like, River for All? We used to have a nice place to watch a movie outside, and now we're in a parking lot. If that's River for All, I don't know. So I'm just saying, I want good parks, but I don't want our money wasted making this a destination city when you have people with kids that can't live here, that can't buy here.
All right. Others wish to be heard on the Parks Master Plan Amendment?
Watch talk back. $45 million to straighten, turn perfectly good blue waters white. The, also in the same corridor, the, what you can see right over there, the gap between the pantline and the, well, that building's had many, now it belongs to C.R.D. as well. That gap was originally a trolley terminal. Opened about 1902. The reason the white bridge is there, Gillette, is because it was a shortcut to move trolleys from Sagatuck, Holland, and Genesee into our downtown. Once had three platforms, housing three streetcars each, so it, four tracks, that's eight rails are talking, 12, it stored 12 railcars, and you're crudely turning it into a park. These vital historic transit turnarounds and transit hubs should be retained for that purpose. And we never hear from the tax-grabbing, what was this? Okay. Anyway, that one should be retained as for transit. It should not be converted into a park. What's there is fine, but the reason you see that gap there between the pantline and the next building north is because it was a trolley terminal. Trolleys ran there as late as 1932, although company briefly mounted buses in 1928. Same deal Rosa Parks Circle. That was for 68 years. That was our transit hub from 1865 on to 1951. Housed horse railcars, streetcars, and buses from about, well, all buses from 1935 on. And your motto there is, city buses will not be tolerated at City Hall, city buses will not be tolerated at Rosa Parks Circle. You know, I see more and more blacks up there. You lose count, and you have a liability. If you don't care about your own African-Americans getting downtown on buses, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 14, then you are liable in terms of our Catholic buses. And don't get me started on which don't get downtown. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So they shouldn't be converted to parks.
Thank you for that history, Mr. Miller. Appreciate it. All right. Anyone else who wishes to be heard on the Parks Amendment? All right. And I was going to ask our Parks Director to come back up, but I'll just share for you that the Parks Millage, after that millage passed, the City Commission, we did adopt guidelines on how those funds will be spent. So we'll make sure that that's readily available if you're interested in seeing how those guidelines are, and that that money will be invested in our neighborhood parks and in recreation and in improved maintenance in our neighborhood parks. All right. So with that, I'm going to close that public comment period, and that will be referred back to Committee of the Hall. All right. Next, that will take us to our last opportunity for public comment tonight, and that is public comment on any of the other items that maybe you came here to speak on. So the same rules apply. We ask that you share your name, the city that you live in, and we'll give you up to three minutes to speak. And you can come right up here. And again, I ask you to put your name over there on that clipboard so that we get your name correct in our minutes. So if you're here tonight to be heard, you're welcome to come up. Good evening, Mr. Davis.
Good evening, Mayor, and Honorable City Commissioner. I'd like to welcome our new City Commissioner. I hope that we can work with her like we worked with Commissioner Kelly. And I have my little agendas. One of them is cleaning up our city because there's too much trash on our city streets. And I'd like to get something going on that, a little more than what I've been able to accomplish myself. And I'm also encouraged to support our local police department. They do a fine job. I think they need a little more help, and I hope that we can arrange for that to be taken care of, because I've seen a number of things that need police attention that they're just not able to work with because of the, at least when on the force. So that'll be my agenda. I hope that we can all work together again this year and accomplish some of the goals that we need to accomplish. And it comes to the buses. I'm 78 years old. I walk. I take the bus. Our bus system is great. I enjoy it immensely. It takes me wherever I want to go. I may have to walk two, three, four blocks to get to it, but that's expected for me because we can't have a bus stopping at everybody's front door to pick up passengers. You're going to have to deal with it, with where you live and that. And I'm real pleased with our bus system particularly, except the dash has been running very irregular lately. And the dash bus, you'll see one bus follow the other within two, three minutes. And something is wrong with their dispatching there. It should be when they get to the end of the line, if there's a bus waiting, the next bus comes up, that first bus takes off. It shouldn't be on an exact eight-minute schedule. And I think that would work a lot better than this deal where they do it on an eight-minute schedule, because when one bus gets there, another, that bus that's waiting takes off. And then we could do that on both ends of the bus route. And it's, what I see is a way to remedy that, because I've waited as much as 30 minutes for the dash bus to come. And that, that's something else that we need to work on. And I hope that we can establish a remedy for that particular thing. Thank you very much, and look forward to working with all of you again this year.
Thank you, Mr. Davis, and I'll follow up on that. Hello, Mr. Jones.
Hello, Commissioners. First of all, congrats on the seat. Nice to see you up there, Ms. Isasi. And Ms. Lanier, thank you for letting me play in the basketball game, even though we lost. I definitely enjoyed it, but I'm going to ask you, please, to let me start next year so we can win. Because I was so mad I will not get over that until next year. I'm not going to get over that. I love basketball. I hate losing at anything. But.
Sorry I wasn't there to see it.
It was definitely fun, but earlier at Link Up, I got to hear the strategic plan from the City Manager, and he was talking about things that I care about, like infrastructure, housing, recreational cannabis, and medical cannabis. So officers, there's nothing, these are just seeds. It's called Obamacare. So this is a cannabis strain that I actually want to grow. It's funny, because I always bring this up, and people are like, holy crap, you got something called Obamacare? Well, I know that Obama was actually giving people medical insurance, so I was just like, hey, this is medical cannabis. I want to be able to show people that you can do things in a proper way and be able to actually give money back to the city. I know he was talking about a local tax and everything else, so I want to be one of those people that actually influence the cannabis industry. This is something I'm very passionate about and show people that you can do it the proper way. So I want to be able to make as much money as I can and actually give back to the city. So I will be saving my money up, trying to get me a recreational license and doing, trying to get that coffee shop going. And I'm very serious about this. I'm very passionate about helping the city and being able to be the change I want to see and potentially win some awards. Like, I would see that on January 16th, they have the Battle of the Buildings Awards. I will be going there, because I want to win a building award. I know people don't think about stuff like that, but I'm just very eco-friendly, green, and just, I'm just very passionate about giving back to the city and showing this cannabis in a different space and being able to try to show the city in a different space so then we can influence the world. I just think at a worldly state, and I just want to be able to be that person that just changes things around here. I hear a lot of people complaining. I'm tired of hearing people complaining instead of just coming up with solutions by themselves. Like, you have to be able to do things yourself. Like, the people that died and paved the way for us didn't complain. They actually went out there in the field, and they came up with things, and they went undone. So I'm not the type of person to complain in. I'm not, I'm not talking about anybody. I'm just saying, hey, I have an idea. I've been pushing for it. I've met people that actually want to help me push forward with this, and I'm just looking to be able to create something where I can show people cannabis in a different space and just be able to be a, create generational wealth for my family, be able to help other people, and potentially help other people get into that space also. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Good evening, Mr. Howe.
Jim Howe, City Grand Rapids. So two things I want to cover tonight. The first is, we started this meeting, and one of the things that was approved was the new legislative agenda. I noticed the second item on there was more housing. It didn't clearly indicate affordable housing, and later on, it's mentioned. So I'm wondering how we find out what steps were taken throughout the year to see how, whatever dollars or whatever movements you made towards those items that you listed as your priorities are being accomplished. I mean, homes for all would love to see work on inclusionary zoning and rent control, things that we need to state to change. And if we're putting dollars behind people going there to lobby for us, I want to make sure we're getting a bang for our buck. So if we could, if you could let me know how I audit them or get a report like we do with the Casper and all the things from that group. The other thing I wanted to bring to your attention, if you're not aware, I'm sure some of you are, but this week at the Planning Commission, Amplify Grand Rapids, Amplify GR is coming forward with their massive redevelopment. I was hoping there'd be some type of VITA or one of our new great items we passed this last year to accompany that project. They mentioned affordable housing, but there are no details at all. And I'm hoping that either you could suggest to the Planning Commission, I know we're missing, it's just a coincidence that they're bringing it forward when there is no Planning Director currently in that seat, but if whoever is filling in for Ms. Schultz in that meeting could push back a little bit for more detailed information. The plans they put forward are very vague about what will go into those spaces. We're knocking down affordable housing units that are there, houses, homes that are there, and they're being replaced by buildings without any type of guarantees or even suggestions to the community about the price levels they're going to be at. So if we could be a little preemptive in getting more information, if you can make that recommendation to your Planning Commission so that we don't have an extremely long night when you guys take it before you. Also, to the clerk, I'd suggest you make that the only public hearing that evening, because there are going to be people that want to share. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Howe. All right. Anyone else who wishes to be heard? All right. I'm going to close that public comment period, and I'll turn to my colleagues up here. And I think I'll start down here with our newest member of the commission, and we'll go this way.
Okay. Well, thank you all for making this first day very exciting and event-filled and very welcoming. So thank you all to my colleagues as well as to city staff. For the record, it's Isasi, so the Y is like a E. Once you get that, it's not too hard. So it's just Isasi. And so I want that for the record. So if anybody has any trouble, be happy to help you pronounce it. And just looking forward to this next year, the items that are in front of us. You know, the word priorities was never meant to be plural, but there are multiple priorities in front of us. And so I look forward to, how do we balance all of the interests that exist here in our city and ensure quality of life for all residents? Thank you.
Isasi that rhymes with posse.
That's right. Yeah, thank you, everybody, for coming out tonight. I am particularly grateful for John O. answering and delicately walking us through the complexities of these projects, and also for the folks who showed up to be able to answer questions should they come up. So thank you all for being here tonight, and welcome to.
Thanks, Commissioner.
Thanks for all of the feedback and comments that were made. I think, did Martha Cooper leave? I think she really had a good question about, and you know, we've talked, I've been talking about this since I've been an elected official, even at the schools, when public comments are given and people are asking some very specific questions or making some very specific comments, and, you know, we have a response that could help them to understand. I think we owe it to the public that's coming here, especially so regularly, saying some of the same comments to have a conversation, to help them to fully understand Oprahs or brownfields and things of that nature, so that then when we have a public hearing, at least they're informed as they're making the comments that they're making. We've talked about the third ward basketball throw-down a few times today, so I feel obligated to give an update. The hoop crew did really well. Any hoop crew members in the house, there we are, waving our hands. We had cheerleaders. I really wanted to cheer, so I did a cartwheel. Jerry Bishop didn't challenge.
Commissioner Jones?
No. You were sitting next to the cheerleaders, so we're counting you in. But seriously, we were able to, and I think more than 80 coats the day of, there are 80 coats donated, and more were coming in after the game, and several hundred dollars were donated, was donated as well. And that was the purpose of it, was to try and raise funds. So thank you to everybody who participated and recruited and practiced and shot some hoops at that event. The other thing I want to make mention of is the sex traffic committee that I'm on. We are having a panel discussion on Tuesday, the 14th, at Croc Center, and it's at 6:00 PM. It's a free event. It has refreshments, because we know it's during dinner hour, there's no registration required. But if you're interested in learning more, and I think Commissioner Moody, you were asking some questions about sex trafficking during one of our work sessions. Anybody who's interested in trying to understand what's happening with sex trafficking or what it really means, please come out. It's, the purpose of it is really to raise awareness about sex trafficking in our community. And so please come out and enjoy, join us for that event. And I think that's all. And welcome.
When is the event again?
Welcome. Did well today.
Tuesday, the 14th.
Tuesday, the 14th, at the Croc Center at 6:00 PM.
Thanks. So was the basketball game videotaped outside of town?
Lord knows, I hope not. But I did not see it. Lord knows, I hope not.
I'm thinking, get her to demonstrate that.
Yeah.
I have heels on, I can't do the cardio.
Commissioner O'Connor?
Okay.
Okay. Commissioner Jones?
Thank you, Mayor. I want to thank everyone for coming out this evening, those who made statements, as well as those who were just present. Also want to take an opportunity to welcome my colleague. Very happy to have Commissioner Isasi here with us on the dais, and look forward to the work ahead in 2020. So thank you.
Thanks. Commissioner Moody?
I'd like to thank everybody for coming out, all of your comments, and I do want to thank the city staff for the work that they do. We are building a wonderful city. There are some things that we do need to continue to work on. I appreciate my colleague Commissioner in there talking about how important it is for communication. We really feel that community needs to constantly be aware, but what's most important is that in making the community aware, the community also needs to abide by what it is that the city is trying to do, and the city is not doing anything to be a detriment to our community.
Yeah, thanks. City Clerk?
I just want to welcome everyone to 2020, presidential election year. So whatever hair I have left, we may see go through the rest of the year. So, thanks.
Thank you. City Attorney? City Manager?
Want to thank city staff for their work in preparing for this meetings and this meeting and all other meetings, as well as to wish everyone here a Happy New Year. I failed to acknowledge earlier the complimentary juice that we had to start off the year with wellness from Malamaya Juice Bar. Thank you.
Right. Thank you. All right. With that, I will add my Happy New Year to everyone. Drive safe out there, and have a good night.